Let's call the meeting to order. I invite those who are willing to stand for the page, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Thank you, Mrs. I almost said Dr. Pals. Mrs. Pals, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Any other discussion on that? You want to talk about the additions or the deletions or anything?
No.
We can read it. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to number four, visitors. None. All right, let's move on to number five, consent agenda. Are there any items that you would like pulled out from 5.1 all the way through 5.9.12? Any items that anyone would like pulled out to be discussed individually? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman. Any other discussion on that?
Mr. Strasser, any comment on the sixth assignments? Is that up, down, the same?
Right now, it's down. You can see the deletion for Mrs. Albertson there. Just trying to balance out our schedule and our offerings. And made some adjustments which meant the lack of a need for a sixth assignment for Mrs. Albertson. So that's kind of where I'm at right now. And there's always a potential for an August 6th either being deleted or added once we really get everything finalized that one to two weeks before the start of the school year. But that's where I'm at with our six assignments.
So this also kind of goes back to the teacher contract and notifying teachers of their assignments prior to July 1st. So may change, but I can always remove something from an assignment, but it's, we'd like to get that done now.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to number six, admin reports and information. 6.1, one, Jackie.
What'd you hear today? We're at 85 percent, which is good, but I'm sure at this time we're at 90 percent. We'll still have bills coming in in July, August, September, hopefully not in October, still pertaining to this fiscal year, so.
Any questions? Any questions for Jackie?
Do you foresee us needing to use the Affordable Care Act penalties?
Maybe it'll be gone by then. No, actually, we had someone go out in the exchange and we appealed it just because this employee was kind of confused and we won the appeal. We haven't gotten any notices. But to tell you the truth, I don't know when we're supposed to get the notices. So do I foresee it? Probably not.
Which, that's good.
But I don't know if they're behind. I don't know, you know what I mean? I really don't know.
Yeah.
I don't think anyone does.
Any other questions for Jackie? Any other questions? Thank you, Jackie. 6.1.2, Cory.
Outside of the six assignments, I still have some openings in our special education, our English of the second language. So trying to fill those positions at this point. Our summer programming started, that's kind of the main thing going on at this point. We have 20 students enrolled in our high school-based credit recovery program, which is up just a little bit. Normally, we're in that 15-point range, so be really good about that. And the main areas are math, science, social studies. So we've kind of got everybody, all the kids, in a good place and moving forward. And got a really good attendance for the first, just over eight. So I'm very pleased with how that's come together. Working on our carpentry collaboration project with Minnesota West at the EDA. I know you'll see an article in the newspaper here relatively soon regarding that. So just trying to make sure those pieces are put together and I'll be communicating. We have five students signed up initially. I'd like to see if I could maybe get a couple more that would be interested in. And part of that's the newness and the uncertainty and when you schedule the timing. So I'm going to try and do some things to get information out and maybe get one, two, three more kids as part of that program here for the first go-round. So pretty excited about that. Yeah, those are the main things that we have done well.
So how do you get the info out there? Do you put it on the website? Do you send emails?
Yeah, we'll put it on the website. I don't think we'll send anything home in terms of letters home, but we'll put it on our app. Just kind of push out, put in media, that kind of thing.
Should work.
Kids walk into our office, we're done working out, they come in with questions about things for whatever reason. And we talk to kids.
Recruit.
So, yeah.
Okay, awesome. How many specialized positions are you trying to fill?
Currently, two.
What levels?
Five, six, and 10 through 12.
And just one ESF?
Yes.
Any specific areas in SED or just overall, like EBD, LD?
LD.
LD?
Yeah. That's the main area.
Want to be able to.
We made some adjustments a year ago, actually during the year, where a lot of our EBD-based students go with one teacher. And a lot of times, those students are in a, I think, a level two or a level three setting versus a level one, which is the least restrictive. So we've made some adjustments there. That's why these two positions are primarily LD learners or SLD.
So what happens if you don't fill those?
We're going to fill them.
Okay. And are these the only two, are these the only three left that need to be filled for next year for teachers or no?
Yes.
Okay. Elementary. I guess I shouldn't say that. Perfect. So when does, have you had lots of applicants for these SED? It's okay.
We'll just say, I don't have a lot, no.
I'm going to say this, and it might be upsetting. Have you looked at licenses of people already on staff?
I'm aware of some who have special licensure, yes.
You would need.
If it would come to that, that would always be an option.
Any other questions for Mr. Strasser? Any comments? I had one earlier in my head, but should have wrote it down. You're too young for that, Sam. Oh, no. All right, well, you can always ask him. Yeah. I'll ask. Any other questions for Mr. Strasser? All right, 6.1.3.
Same for me. I don't really have a whole heck of a line either going on.
I know.
Just kind of finishing up the year and working on getting our Jasper preschool going and putting that together. So I've been working with the new preschool teacher and one of our other preschool teachers to get that put together. And we also have our first week of targeted services, summer school, that started this week. And one of our ESY summer school also started last week, so, yeah. So just been kind of busy, busy getting PA systems in the elementary school. So it's kind of a mess if you go in there. There's wires and all kinds of things going on, but.
For all classrooms, we're going to have the PA system.
Mm-hmm.
Nice.
Yep. So it's exciting. It's always messy before it looks nice, so it's kind of the way it goes.
Well, I sure have appreciated the, I mean, in the paper and probably have done a good job just reading about the preschool in Jasper.
Oh, thank you.
Good stuff to read.
Thanks.
Yeah, I haven't read the newspaper for like five weeks.
Finally, you said, "I'll just forget it, Danny, just toss them." But where are you sitting numbers-wise as now? And I think maybe you had kind of said.
For Jasper. For Jasper? Yeah. We have registration. We had about four people show up for that, but there's other people on the list that are from Jasper, so it's just a matter. I've just been sorting through a lot of that this last week. Who's PM, who wants AM, who's three, who's four?
Sure.
And just kind of figuring out, you know, how we could do that and maybe taking some of our people from the waiting list and moving them in. So I'm still kind of juggling some numbers a little bit, so.
What are we hoping, what's a full, what are we hoping for for numbers?
10 would be great. But I think we can, I think once we start it and just get going, that's going to start some momentum, so.
With preschool, there's ratios that?
Yes. It's one to 10, one adult to 10 kiddos. So, yep.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So can we afford to do it at four kids? Are you a teacher?
Yeah, we'll be all right. But I don't think we'll just have four kids.
We hope we get more, but.
Yeah. Yep. I'm just saying that's who came to the actual registration that night, so when we were down there, so.
That's a good point. You know, we know we have an awful lot of four-year-olds who don't take part in preschool in our school district. So there's, they're out there. It's how we get them in and how do we connect? And I think that's part of this whole process is how do we connect? And how do we make, you know, do we get these kids in and know what's available and speak with their families, so.
So is their waiting list in Pipestone?
Yes.
So can we, I mean, is it worth busing some of those kids that way?
Possibility.
I mean, you know, I mean to, if we're going to have a teacher in the space.
Absolutely. No, there's some options that way, too. We just need to sit down and talk about those logistics yet, so.
Thank you. Any other thoughts or comments or questions for Tony? All right, let's move on to 6.2, school board members. Anyone have any thoughts from committee meetings or you want to add something?
Well, we do have the superintendent evaluation and the board's self-assessment. Deb, did you get those out? Does everybody?
Yes.
Okay, so you can take them with you tonight. The plan is, is that we will have a work session in July and go over my evaluation and talk about the board's self-assessment, so we'll do that. Your assignment from tonight is to take that paperwork home. We were going to get it back in. I think Deb was going to compile it and then we'll get it to Wendy. And then Wendy will visit with me about my evaluation. And then we'll talk about what we got on everybody's self-assessment of the board at that work session. And another piece of that is also that work session is to talk about our goals for '17, '18, and what do we want to refine and kind of setting that direction for me. So that's kind of where that's all. So you got that paperwork, so don't forget to do that. Deb will be calling. Make sure you got your assignment done.
Deadline?
Probably should, well, our work session is going to follow the July 24th meeting, so probably if we could get it in by the week before, because then Wendy and I should really meet that week, so. Seventeenth, yeah. Set that.
Can we just bring it to you, Deb?
Yeah.
Okay. And we put that on the agenda, so I could just report the overall summary of it?
Right, that'll be the, that'll be on the work session agenda.
Okay.
Negotiations have met, so I don't know if they want to report anything.
Pretty well got language worked out. We still have a few language issues. We have started talking dollars. And when it comes down to the dollars, it's going to have to decide where the dollars are going, whether it be towards everybody getting a raise or if they want it on health insurance or other areas where money is sent to. So that's about, unless you guys have something else? We are going to meet with them next Monday night again.
The 10th?
Yep, 10th. Try and keep hashing stuff out for two weeks.
Two weeks, yeah. Thank you to that committee. Anyone else have any committee reports or?
Facilities did meet once, but I have some stuff in my report that we'll cover on that.
Okay. I have a couple of thank yous here. This is from the family of Eric Wahlberg, from the flowers that we had sent to them. And then this is a thank you from Colleen Cruzmark to Mr. Enerson and to the school board, saying, "I will never forget your kindness. Thank you for the beautiful clock you gave me for my retirement. I appreciate this very much. It was an honor to work for PAS," so. All right, any other board reports, information that anyone wants to share? All right, moving on to 6.3, superintendent.
I just have a few things I did want to share with the board. New teacher mentoring program that the staff development committee put together. This is for our new teachers and we're going to have approximately 13 again, right? 13, 15? The principals and myself and also Ms. Wellness will be, you know, getting mentors or trying to find suitable mentors for these new teachers that we're bringing onboard. I think it's very important that we do provide that support. And last year, we kind of did the best we could, but we've just kind of put together a formalized mentor program. As you can see here, I just put together, it's kind of what is our goals, what do we want to get accomplished with this? We should clear it up a little bit better. But then we have suggested activities and even breaks it down by month, the different things that the mentor and the mentee will discuss and talk about and really take them through that first year. We do look to probably expand this into that second-year mentoring program, but we just wanted to get something down as somewhat of a guide. We will, I'm sure, continue to tweak and adjust this as we go along. And again, I don't know what will happen with partnerships with the service co-op. They're looking at the new teacher center for some type of support that way. I've informed you, I've met with Southwest State. And so as we go through, I really see that this mentoring is not just us, but other partners in providing a really good supportive network and system for new teachers when they come into the school district. So we know that the money and the time that we would spend doing this pays off in teacher retention and also in teacher efficacy. They, I don't know how you, what term I should use, mature. They grow and get to a level of much more confidence quicker when you have these mentoring programs rather than just the principal providing it. The principal comes in with that evaluative piece, which people are just worried about their jobs. But when you can talk with colleagues, run things by colleagues, and when you put together a formalized process like this, it just, it really gets those young teachers to where we want them to be. So we're excited, and I just wanted the board to be aware of this new teacher mentoring program. I don't know if we need to, we do have some stipends for the mentor teachers, which is in negotiations, but so I don't think this is anything we have to have formally approved. We could, but it's also just good for you to know that this is what we've got going on with them, so. I don't know if anybody has any questions on it or?
That was well-written, very thorough.
Yeah.
And if I could share with the board, if you'd like to watch TED Talks, I don't know if you saw underneath the mission statement, it's that Rita Pearson, there's a quote by her, "Every child needs a champion." Look for her TED Talk on YouTube. She talks, I think she's passed away from cancer, but she's got a dynamic presentation on being a champion for children, if you'd like to watch that. It's really good.
All right. Second item I had was tennis courts. We had our meeting for the construction process to begin, and everything is in order. All the paperwork is there, so the trees are down and that process will begin, I'm not exactly sure. They said that they are slated to be here August 11th to put the asphalt down, so that's there. And then they said they kind of work back from there. So from there, the excavation and all of the other work, they will have their timeline, so. But the earliest they could begin would be today, and so we should see it here pretty soon. And if they can get it down on August 11th, that'd be really good, because it takes 28 days for the asphalt to cure before they can put the courts down. And as you can tell, that would get us into mid-September probably at the earliest, so hopefully everything cooperates and, but the deadline or the date that everything was due is like October 12th, I believe, so. But we're good to go with the tennis courts. The next piece I have is.
Can I interrupt just a minute?
Yes.
From just hearing concerns in the community, would you mind addressing why we don't just use what we currently have? Like the courts on Highway 30 and 23?
Okay.
Some of the reasons why those aren't acceptable for high school tennis?
Sure. Well, the surface is fine for practice, and I think they're regulation courts, but there's only three typically tennis. And for competitive tennis, you need to have at least seven courts, because in a tennis team, there are four individual and three team matches that take place. And then if you have JV, you know, there's all kinds of different things that go on. So there isn't enough courts uptown for us to host any type of event, and I don't believe that the surface would be acceptable for Minnesota State High School League competition. Secondly, our current courts, they have, they're just not usable, the cracks, it's unsafe. We've, I mean, if we put anybody out there on purpose and said we could play there and they got hurt, we would get sued for a lot of money. You can't have people play tennis on our courts here, so. The downtown facilities are great, you know, for, if you're into tennis, but for competition in Minnesota State High School League, we need to update and have the eight courts is what you normally build. Symmetrical, so. That.
I was just asked.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, that's where that's at.
Thanks.
And we do have competitive tennis here. And when you look at our girls program that had over 40, almost 50 girls, three courts is, that's, I mean, you can't, even eight courts, that's a lot of kids. But it's still a lot better. You can do different types of drills and run them through with having that type of facility. Boys were up to just 15, 20. So they even had fairly good numbers, too. So the eight courts definitely is needed. I do not think, so.
I agree.
We have a program, so we should be providing what we would provide for any other activity. You know, if you had gymnastics, but you didn't have the floor routine, I don't know. Well, Tony says it'd be not good. Wouldn't be fair. One basket, play half-court basketball.
True. Okay.
No, and I, you know, I think those are good questions. People don't understand, and there's nothing wrong with it. That's why we bring that up and share that, so.
Thank you.
Anything else? At the facilities committee, we heard, I brought up to them that we've been approached by our neighbor to the west. It is the property of.
Doris?
Doris, oh my goodness, Kevin, write the name down. The family right next to us to the west. We bought this land for the current middle school, high school from them back in whenever. And the mom has passed away, so the family is looking to sell this property. And they approached the school district and the city about this 50-acre property. And so we've been talking, and I brought it up to the facilities committee, and they said, "Well, let's check into it and I think we should talk about it and discuss it." So I'm kind of putting it out there for discussion during my report to see if we want to continue to pursue this or not. I did ask them what they are looking for in terms of price, and they said they had an appraisal done. I haven't seen it, but they said it was appraised at $431,000, so it's just over $8,000 an acre. Uses and why would the school district purchase 50 acres of land? I guess, you know, again, it isn't where we went out and we're asking, we're being approached. And so this is where the board, I think, and the school district has to look at this and is this, would it be wise to look into this? Potential future uses, if there's, of course, any expansion, but we're not really sure we have anything at this moment. But 50 years from now, I don't know. You know, what could happen in Pipestone? The other side is, is we have a really good ag program, FFA, and this could be a classroom area where we could have crops planted and potentially livestock and things that, you know, could be used as a learning area and land could be used for that purpose. It's not unusual. I talked to Mr. Blumgarden. He said when he was at RTR, they had 20 acres. When he taught in South Dakota, they had 40 acres the school district had just for that purpose, so. I guess where we're at would be a discussion of what do we think? Do you want to have me pursue things further? Are we not interested? I did ask if we could buy part of it, or it's kind of an all or nothing, and if, and I asked about negotiating on the price maybe. And I think if they, if we want to negotiate on the price, they said, "We'll just have it on an auction, you can negotiate there." So that would be where that would be at, so. Guess any thoughts from anyone?
Well, I think as far as future building expansion, you're going to run into trouble with the road being in there. The road would have to be abandoned before you'd be able to connect it to this property by building anyway. Then you do have 7.34 acres of restricted wetlands down through the bottom there. To build a, to get a level site there, it looks like there is a fairly decent grade to it. And it is nice in the proximity to the school. You know, and if we were hot and heavy looking at trying to build like soccer fields or something, it'd probably be a great idea. But also with probably trying to want to get an operating levy and a school bonding just down the road, $400,000 is an awful lot of money to shell out.
I agree to the same argument. I mean, everything's, everything's happening at once here. I mean, we're tennis courts and levy and we always talk about we're going to put an elementary school, we'd like to at some point. I think they're a little high in the land. It's 9,039,43 on the tillable. That's where we would, where we can make money. And I don't know if, how long the current contract is, rental agreement with wine costs is, or?
Those would be, I mean, I think you have to be, if things are in place, you probably have to own that for a year or whatever, for two years. I don't know how long those things go.
I mean, it'd be great for the FFA and while they're doing good, but.
We just have the crystal.
Yeah.
It does give us more options for an elementary school.
It does give us more options for an elementary school, too, rather than just limiting us to the north part, if that's where we're kind of looking.
Well, yes and no, because with Herm Meyer's ground there, the size of acreage he has, he has to have entrance to it. And with this already being an established road, it's not going to be easy to just tear the road out.
But isn't there a variance already on that road with him because we own it?
There is an easement, he has, there's an easement for that property.
So we'd still maintain the road just with an elementary school across?
It's our road now.
Yeah.
That, it's our road now. The road is ours. This is the property on the other side of the road. If you're going to do anything there and you alter the road, you sure have to continue to give him access, our neighbor.
Would it be something worth looking at, seeing if the city would go half and half on it, and there could be a combined elementary school and a new rec center, something like that? I'm just saying.
Sure.
That's what I've heard from other people around is maybe it could be a combined effort or something like that. Because an opportunity like this, I don't think happens too often where a school has an opportunity to get like-
Right.
Well, and I think I mentioned to the committee, the moment we want to buy some land, the price is going to go-
Right.
Way up, real fast. Dr. Smith has explained some great stories that he's had in trying to purchase land for schools, you know.
How do we fund this?
Let's just, do we have some people sharing? Jeff and Katie, you want to share that aloud with all of us?
I was just wondering, how wet is the wetlands? Is it like swamp, or is it just-
I don't know how wet it is.
I mean, that's what I was just questioning. It's right down through the middle of the property, so it's like how wet is wet?
But it doesn't, it really doesn't matter how wet it is, it has restricted use. That's what's a little-
So you can't change that?
That's the little rep. You can't, you just can't go in and alter it.
Randy, what were you saying?
So they'd have to be used as separate properties?
Sorry.
How would we pay for it?
Yes, how would we pay for it?
Well, we could, you know, I mean, you've got options again. We have money in the fund balance, you could, it's a big chunk of it. You could also do a similar thing like we're doing with the tennis courts. You could sell a bond based on our general fund revenue and pay it back over 10, 15 years, which, you know, that would be, if you went 10 years, that's probably about $45,000 a year, $50,000 a year, which is not, that's not a big major part of our budget. We could probably handle that. If you went 15 years, you could finance it for a little less, so you probably could do that that way. Plus, you can rent out if you wanted to, you could rent the property. I don't know how much revenue you would generate off the 47 acres, but it'd be something there, probably over 40 years, you probably would generate enough to. But if you used it for FFA or ag, you know, you wouldn't have all of that revenue coming in then. Might have some, but they would use it for the FFA program probably.
So is this some information that we would like the facilities committee to get more of, you know, talk to the city, find out some of those revenue questions and the land and the grade, like grade as in hill?
Yeah.
For sledding, for elementary? Oh, I'm sorry. That'd be fun, okay. I mean, do we want more information gathered and brought back to us? Or are you saying no right now, or what are you thinking?
Well, I think you gather more information, go through your facilities one, and then I think your budget committee would probably also have to sit down and look at options as to how it can be paid for.
I think that's a good idea.
And you'll get an idea, because you should be able to get an idea then of what the current lease is, how long it runs, dollars that are being generated through that lease.
Are they in a hurry to sell, or do we have some time?
We have some time. I think, you know, I think we're not going to make any, I told them we wouldn't be making any type of major decisions at this meeting and probably not in July, but August. I think they would like to have an answer, and I thought we should probably be able to, by August, come up with a yes or no and go forward from there.
So gather more information.
Or if we were strongly interested and want one more month, you know, I don't, yeah.
So maybe gather more information and bring that to the work session? Or the next board?
I think it should go to the, probably the facilities.
Right.
So we get that information to you?
Yeah, the facilities and the budget.
At work set, you know, at the work session or whatever.
Work together and-
Bring it to that, and then like Jeff said, maybe the budget people, you need to look at it financially, how it's going to work.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, we got a lot going on. It's like, I get the phone call. Really? Okay. Well, yeah, just, you're right, Lance, there's a lot going on, and it's, and, you know, but again, I sit back and I think about it, you know. Part of what we do in leadership is where are we at? And in 50 years, are they going to say, I'm really glad they did this, they saved us a lot of money down the road? Or, you know, didn't really need to do that. You know, so, you know, they could develop houses on it or sell it back to the farmer or, you know, I don't, you know, where it will all be, I'm sure.
And I truly appreciate the family thinking of us first as, you know, a possible community and a team.
Lots of questions to be answered.
I will, I will probably get ahold of ISG to talk about some of the land issues and that slope and the road access and how do you handle those types of things? Anything else you can, in that wetland area? Might be a good science area. I don't know if it's big enough, but.
That'd be pretty easy for him to go off topography map, see the slope and soil types are there and, you know, I don't know how far west you would need to go to build a school, but.
Right.
I don't know how far you'd have to stay away from Herm's property.
Setbacks.
There's got to be setbacks somewhere.
And even like with Herm's property back there, you know, would we be better off abandoning this road and giving him an easement to come across like back here? Because I know he does use this back here now.
He can use any road he wants.
Depends what time he's coming from land, so.
Right. We just got to make sure we can get him home. All right. I think so. All right. Oh, let's see. Well, been talking about the lawn mowing and trying to get caught up and get ahead of things. I don't know, do you guys hear? Hear complaints or?
I see when I drive by.
I know. That's what I see, too.
I mean, it looks unkept. It does.
I only heard a couple on the, you know, the brown, the weeds that were growing, but I think I talked to, and then after we hung up, I went to go over to the pool.
Go on.
Yeah, he was working on it right then, it's like, okay, that was quick.
Right.
Yeah, so that's all down already, all the boards are removed, the dirt's-
Oh, in front of the school?
In front of Brown, yeah. They removed all the boards and the gardens are gone and the tires are gone.
Is that going to hill then, too?
It's going to be.
Okay.
If it's, I don't know.
That's been an eyesore for a while. Okay, that's less.
Oh, yeah.
I received one call about the old.
So how many mowers presently do we have mowing lawns? On how many acres approximately?
I don't have the acre number. We have the two six-foot mowers and a five-foot mower, so we have three mowers. And I know we've hired two, two individuals to mow, and then our, Ruben, our grounds guy, mows. I look at all the little things, the flower beds in front of Hill and Brown and the flowers around this school and, you know, the weeds that are in the, on the hill and when does that stuff get trimmed? We've got trees that need to be taken out around the football field and out there, they're dead, they got to get down. You can't, you know, when do we get to the little stuff is the, you know, and I, I'm trying to be, I'm the new guy, I know, so, and I really wasn't that attentive last summer. I wasn't looking at flowers, I was trying to learn a lot of other things. But I guess as I've gone here, this, and I've had my conversations with Cal, it's the little stuff, and, you know, they're just mowing to keep up. And I said, you should have, you know, six to 10 hours a week where they can just do the little stuff, watering plants if you need or, and weeding and trimming up stuff alongside buildings. And that's where the bigger mower, if you had a larger mower, maybe a 12-foot mower, you could cover that much more and free up that much space.
Well, the little stuff all adds up when you look at the whole picture of things.
And I guess that's where, I've noticed mine, is that just different this year or last year or is it kind of?
This has been an issue of mine for a lot of years, and it hasn't ever gotten addressed anytime I've brought it up. So it's not just this year.
And, I mean, we could hire, we could buy another six-foot mower and hire another person, but I think it'd be more efficient maybe to get a 12-foot mower. You know, have at least a 12-foot and a six-foot and the five, I mean, that's, I mean, add one mower, and we get a lot of grass.
Yeah, a lot of grass.
And, you know, if that can free up one day a week to just do the little things or have, you know.
I guess, isn't there more, isn't there janitorial staff that during the year are cleaning classrooms and all that stuff that doesn't necessarily have to be done anymore on a daily basis that can do some of these jobs? Or, I mean, I just look at how much there is to clean when you have the school open versus not open. I would think there'd be people that have less work, you know, I don't know, maybe not.
But now they're stripping and doing all the others, getting ready for next fall.
They, they, that's why we have an outdoor crew. We've got the indoor staff, and we hire extra people for the staff because we have people take their vacations and they do that in the summer, so then you have to, you know, have that balance, but there's a lot of work that we need to do with that.
Maybe we need to just get another extra one or two younger kids that can stay there but on a mower. Ruben shouldn't have to be on a mower, he should be working with the flowers and that kind of stuff. I think that taking the trees down, you may just have to like hire the city. They can knock that stuff down in a heck of a hurry, they have the equipment to do it. We don't have the equipment to do it. They can clean it up, we're better off paying them. I mean, it's nice to keep as much in-house as we can, but we still have to have the ability to do it, like the trees, I don't think we have the ability to do it safely.
Good point. I just know he needs to get done, and I've heard it's on a list, and I want the schedule.
Well, you got to start mowing earlier, too, I mean.
I know when I mowed, we always tried to mow Monday through Thursday, get it all done then. And we still have the two six-foot mowers, but I don't, I thought we did a good job, but maybe we didn't, I don't know. But we mowed like all day long, that's all we do.
I don't think for me it was so much the mowing, and I've noticed more the last couple of years, but I think it is, it's a lot of those little things. I mean, you know, he wanted those flower boxes out front and, you know, I know my mom said one year, I mean, she maintained them all summer because they got neglected, and so then now they're not even there anymore. I mean, on the cement, you know, they had had those wooden boxes out there and, you know, so didn't have time, you know, good thought, good intentions, I think initially, but just, you know, it's not, like I said, it's just all the, probably the little things, I think, that a lot of people notice.
They get it stupid.
Yeah.
One, a couple times last summer, I just came on Saturday, fully.
Right, right, yeah.
Rock, just for the bridge.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know, I did that, I did that, too.
I did that at Brown when I was walking, I go.
And I appreciate everyone in the community and employees who do do that, but they're doing it because it looks bad, and it should be something that needs to be on our schedule. And I'm just, again, I, you know, I don't know what to think. I mean, I'm hearing, yeah, we always used to get it done.
Well, I will say we have mowing done, but the little things are probably neglected then, but.
Right.
So Randy, were you hired as a high school student?
Yeah, we mowed, I mowed two or three summers. But when you're mowing, you are, you're mowing all day long.
Is that what he, does he have high school kids hiring now?
He does, yeah.
That are mowing, only mowing?
Yeah. Cal Flatall told me, he says mowing is Monday to, basically Monday to Friday, and you get it all done. And then he said again, over on Monday, they don't have time for this, and I don't know. Like I said, hire another mower, hire more, buy a bigger mower, whatever. I mean, we got to do something to try to get, I mean, that one big mower is going to chew up a lot of area. You're just going to do the work of two mowers, and you still got to have somebody who drives that little five footer to get around all the trees and things. But then you can start getting to the little stuff and the spraying and the weeds and the shrubs and flowers. I mean, it was really nice all around the sign on one of our elementary, yeah, put that, well.
Mr. Blumgarden's-
What happens when you don't take care of it? I mean, they put it in, nice, but I don't think they're coming back. I don't know, maybe they do come back.
No, they don't.
No, so somebody's got to go out there and take care of it. The Paulson Field sign, but there's, I think a flower thing in there, and it's not flowers in there.
Mr. Blumgarden's, Mr. Brian plants those out on the Paulson Field sign from the FFA class, he does flowers, but for them to have to come and water them. You know, I mean, these guys have a big gallon thing to prepare it.
Yeah, right, right. My thought is, is it to hire just another student so that it frees up that person to do those things? I don't know. That's my thought, they can't, it wouldn't be that expensive to hire another student, you know, to mow the lawn so that that person can.
Right.
Right, I don't know, that's my thought, I guess.
Well, I think so. I think you're better off, let's just try with extra help, and if that still is a failure, you can always purchase the ungodly expensive mower.
Well, I mean, we spend over $20,000 on the current mowers. The 12 footers, about $50,000, so, you know, but it's twice the mower, so.
Something bigger like that, would we need more experience running that, though?
My, I mean, these are things. That's why I had lawn mower, I mean, it's just part of that whole system, and I think it's just, we need to be conscious of that.
But I appreciate you caring.
Yeah.
You're taking the time to actually address it, so I appreciate that.
But do you necessarily need a student? Maybe some older gentleman or lady that?
Yeah, right.
Not saying kids can't do it, but sometimes a little more experience or somebody that matters to these kids.
They just want something to do that's retired or, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I'm just throwing things out, but.
Yeah, just hiring a third person.
When I was a kid, it was as fast as you could mow it, so you could go get, just get your friends or go be over there.
That's what I did.
Put your very own, personally, like, I take a little more pride in.
I mowed as fast as I could.
Even Randy mows as fast.
Forget the brains.
I agree with Jeff.
So what, are you wanting, I mean, is he wanting like something done yet this summer? Are we?
Yeah, I was throwing out things, and I, I mean, we were looking at it, and I just don't, it seems that we should be probably going through our budgeting process with buying a new mower, if we're going to, we shouldn't just do that. Getting more help, I can, we can look into that, and maybe we can even have mowing and keep them mowers going at night, you know, until seven, eight o'clock or something, have a second shift mowers come in so we get some time freed up, so. We may be able to do that. I haven't put the numbers down and tried to figure all that out, but.
Like the garden staff, the maintenance, the kiddos that are doing that, I mean, do they have time in their day? I don't really know what their schedules are. You know, I see we hired another one, I didn't know if one quit or they need more, more help because it's bigger. I just, I don't know what their hours are, if they, you know, just around here, because I don't think some of these kids can drive that, that are hired, but, you know, I mean, if they could do around this building, whatever needed, I just didn't know what their- know what their.
They're through the FA or whatever.
Okay, okay.
FFA, so that's, they go through that piece.
They go through that, okay.
Um, I don't know what their time is. Maybe they do and we could hire them on when they got help, so.
Okay.
Um, also with our, you know, with the resignation of our subcaller, um, looking to get an automated subcalling system. Uh, it'll be more efficient. It costs us about forty, $500 a year and, uh, actually, um, probably gives us access to more substitutes. So, hopefully it'll be a, be a positive thing. Um, so we'll be looking to put that, implement that here in August too, so. And then the final thing that I, I have on my sheet is the CEO program, Laverne. The Laverne community has, um, is in on the CEO program and, Mr. Strasser, I don't know if you wanna jump in here too, but this is kind of an entrepreneur, uh, business, um, opportunity for students who are really interested in this stuff to, to get a class outside of school and, um, learn about business and what it takes to start up a business and, um, do those types of things. Um, they're looking at, Laverne is looking at offering this to all school districts in southwest Minnesota. And so, um, I would like to see and let Pipestone Area Schools students have an opportunity to be a part of this program. So, I don't know if you got anything to add, Corey or?
Well, that was a pretty good summary, but, I mean, it's, it's an opportunity, it's, it's not a school-first program. It's a community-first program, so that means, um, your businesses are taking the initiative to, um, both fund and operate the program in conjunction with the school. Uh, so, from that standpoint, it's a, it's a great way for communities to really, um, you know, build up their, utilize their resources to help kids get a different perspective, a different take on, on, uh, learning entrepreneurship versus sitting in a classroom and learning kind of the traditional way. Uh, so, it is a good thing. Um, and I think it, it's just, it helps give our kids some different opportunities to be a part of, uh, something they might be interested in and expand the way in which they do things. Uh, so it's good.
And we've had, uh, community, uh, members who have attended, uh, these sessions. They're in, they're, they've, uh, and Laverne is in. They've, they're, the nice thing is, Laverne is kind of in with the SWIFT Southwest Initiative Foundation and this is part of their grow own down in Laverne. So, they've already put the investment forth of the cost of the program and are expanding the opportunities to southwest Minnesota. So, um, it's a great opportunity and.
And if communities are, are really interested in keeping some people here, um, to maintain their communities and, and keep them vibrant, then this is one way in which to, uh, work towards that, that kind of a goal. Uh, so, it's great to see businesses, uh, really look at this and, um, and you can't just do it in Laverne. It has to be, you know, they're not large enough. Um, so that, that's why it's important to bring other schools in and, and there are benefits to everybody.
So is it just a program or, or is it a grade? I mean, is it a class or it's a, a extra program that you just like FFA?
Right. It, it would be essentially a class. So they would go for, uh, probably two periods of the day and, um, yeah, um, and just kind of work through the curriculum as it's put together, which the curriculum is really a, a lot of, uh, um, the hands-on experience, going to businesses, learning from the owners and, and how you do specific things and tasks. And then, uh, the other side is creating your own business. So, um, yeah, it's a good, good ball of wax to be part of.
They have to dress appropriately every day. They have to be on time every day.
That's good.
There are skills that they are teaching them that's, it's really good, so.
Yeah.
Got anything to add, Kevin, or?
I think it's a great program. Not only are they, I think, learn some business skills, but I think it's gonna create a great awareness for these students of what's going on in their hometown and their neighboring towns. If you all think they have to get out of here and, and be successful, they'll find out that there's a lot of opportunity right here in their hometown.
Kevin's attended a couple meetings. That's my report. Got my assignments.
Just kidding. Yes, thank you. Thank you, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to number seven, second reading of the Learning Readiness Handbook.
Got anything for us, Tony, on the Learning Readiness Handbook?
We just updated the, um, behavior to match what was at the elementary schools. So, it's, that's about it.
Right.
Yeah, I just did a little more.
Yep.
So just tweaked a couple things.
Tweak a few.
So any questions for her on it after looking at it? Or Tony or Kevin or anyone? No other questions?
There's no designation as to which school this would follow, right? To like Brown or?
Learning Readiness is just our preschool program.
Right. So it'll cover the Jasper?
Yep.
Perfectly fine. I mean, there's no designation. That's what I mean. There's no designation as
No.
This is Brown School Learning Readiness.
It's all preschool. All preschool. All Learning Readiness. Yep. Any other questions for her? So I do need a motion. If someone would have a motion to accept the Learning Readiness Handbook?
So.
Thank you, Mr. Bop, or was that Mr. Roy?
No, John. I'll suck it up.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the second reading of the Learning Readiness Handbook signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number eight, new business, approved contract for Deborah Steeg, technology integrationist. Do you wanna say anything about that?
Um, we, uh, the Advent team, we, um, interviewed Deborah, uh, for the tech integrationist position. She has a great deal of knowledge and skills, uh, that she'll be bringing to help our teachers, uh, integrate and use and enhance their, their teaching, uh, for our, in the classroom. I, we're pretty lucky. She's been in a position down in Iowa, much like our service co-op, where she was kind of the, the head of the tech integrationists that they had in their different school districts. She's done this job for 10 years and then she was actually an administrator for about eight years. Looking to get back home, she's from the area. I believe she even taught and began her career, um, here in Pipestone or Jasper.
Pipestone.
Pipestone and, uh, and then moved on. And, and so she's coming back and, uh, we just think we've, we were pretty lucky to, to land her. So, really looking forward to her joining the staff, so, I'm pretty excited.
So any other questions for him? Do I have a motion to accept or to approve the contract for Deborah Steeg for the tech integrationist?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bells. Any other discussion? Any other discussion on the contract for Deborah Steeg? Any other questions, comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Eight point two, approve the fiscal year 18 budget.
All right. Well, now on the screen, I guess, and with Jackie, um, and I'm not trying to take any, stealing any of Jackie's thunder. She's been working for about three months on this. Well, actually, she's been working longer 'cause I asked her to have something in January and she said, "You're kidding," right? And she said, "No." She, she put something together in like two weeks and here you go.
Good job, Jackie.
So, um, and what, really, how much were you off? 'Cause you were laughing about that.
Not that much.
Yeah, she actually nailed it. And so we're wondering if she has to spend, but no, she really works hard on, uh, basically putting together our budget, uh, for the school district. So we're gonna kind of take you through some of the highlights. Uh, there's a lot more information that breaks down where these numbers come from. And if you want those numbers broken down further, Jackie's got that information there in her binders, so, um, we can answer, she can answer. I shouldn't say we, she can answer anything. I can answer a few things. Uh, but basically what we're proposing and what the district, uh, is proposing for next year, a couple of guidelines. It's a very conservative estimate, meaning, uh, we put our calculations of our expenditures on the high end and our revenues probably as low as, uh, we, we dare. We are considering that there's going to be a loss of 17 students in this budget. Uh, there was a hundred thousand dollar contingency built in. And also, special education estimate is very soft, which I asked Jackie, what does that mean? And she said, um, we're kinda looking at what we spent last year and probably adding a little bit 'cause we don't know who's coming in. And we look at our revenues and probably estimate a little under what we got. So, again, it's, it's, uh, expenditures high, revenues low with our special education. It's a real turkey shoot. Is that a fair enough thing to say? Probably shouldn't say turkey shoot.
I said worse.
Yeah. We're not gonna go there with what she said. So, uh, overall, our general fund, which is the one where we, uh, get most of our dollars, uh, we're projecting revenues of 13,528,000 for, uh, next year, uh, and expenditures of 13,984,000, uh, so a deficit of about 456,000. I think when we originally did this, it was about a $600,000 deficit, so.
In January?
Yeah.
No, it's 400 and some.
It was 400 and some thousand. So she was really close even in January. Um, and again, that's, you know, we got that hundred thousand dollar contingency built in and over the years we've, uh, that's really come out pretty close to our expenditures and revenues have been very close. Um, that's the general fund. I don't know if you have any questions on that. There's an awful lot of different funds and revenue sources and where our expenditures come in on that. So, I don't know if anybody has, I guess if you got any questions, ask at any time or ask at the end. Uh, second page here, I have our fiscal, uh, this is our food service fund. If you remember, there are approximately five different funds that make up our budget. I think Jackie even got to add another one, so that was kind of fun for her. Uh, but food service is another one and our revenues are projected at 915,000 and our expenditures about 833. So we'll have a surplus in food service of 81,000. Um, and then you can look, we had a fund balance of 113, uh, and that goes up to 251,000, uh, is what our projection is. And just so you know, the fund balance in food service, we still have to provide equipment. So, I know that the freezer, we put a lot of repairs in and I don't know if we should just get a new one, but, uh, it's working and, uh, but there, there is that that goes into the fund balance with that. And, and this money, these fund balance dollars can only be used in food service.
And we can just continue to carry this stuff over and over again? Or is there so long or just a certain percentage?
Food service, yes. We can carry the positive over.
Okay.
If it had been a negative, you could only have a negative for like two years.
Right, and we already talked about that.
But I'm pretty strict on the positive.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, our community education fund, uh, we have original revenues of 228,000 with expenditures of 226, so about a $2,000 surplus there. And as you can see, the fund balance was at 118, uh, and we're looking at it being around 112. Um, we did have a deficit last year and a little bit of a surplus we're budgeting, uh, for this year. So, still got about 112,000 in community education. I've got a note, ECFE and preschool are also under community education, but have their own budgets. And so I have that for you here also. You can see our early childhood family education budget. Uh, it's projecting about a 26,800 surplus. And, uh, so there's a fund balance in ECFE of about 56,945.
You still have to pay for the.
Uh, our preschool learning readiness, um, operates at a deficit, um, revenues of about 159 and expenditures of 173. Um, for a deficit of about 14,000 is what we're projecting, uh, for next year. And you do see, we do have a negative fund balance. One of the things that we do, and, and this is where maybe Ms. Bartman kinda can watch this, the ECFE and the learning readiness in the preschool kinda blend and some of this is, are we coding things to the right places? We have some money in ECFE. They share a lot of the equipment and stuff, so can that be, can we go back and forth a little bit there? You may wanna just make sure we get things coded a little differently. And then, uh, our debt service, which is what we owe on this building, uh, we have revenues of 1.5 million dollars and expenditures of about 1.5 million dollars with a difference of about 25,000. I noticed last year's difference was about 50,000, so, um, there are some things where we can levy a little bit more. And Jackie explained that that's because they let us have that in there as a cushion for possible people not paying their taxes?
Crack.
That's your quiz?
How am I doing, Jackie? She sat me down for over an hour today.
It wasn't that long.
I know. And here's the new fund that we got to build. It's the construction fund, which is for the tennis courts. Uh, we're projecting revenues of 790,000. Construction costs, as you can see, is 855 and the issuance cost is about 20. And then, uh, we would, this is where we charge back to our general fund about 85,000 to get that, uh, how we would pay for the tennis courts.
And then 20,000 is all 15, right? See, it's already changed, but that's just the way it works, the budget.
So, um, basically I've got all of the funds all together. Uh, the school district, uh, has revenues of over 17 million dollars, uh, expenditures of 17 and a half million dollars. So there's a total projected deficit in our budget of 334,000, uh, 334,000 for next year. Uh, I added a note that we do make adjustments as we go through the 17, 18 school year. Uh, there is so many unknowns and I think if you recall, we get an audit. I mean, we're finding out basically what the real numbers end up being because of the revenues and how we get them, um, two years down the road. So, um, this is our, our best estimate. Um, and Jackie works very hard, uh, putting in as many of the current numbers as we have. And when the state comes with the 2% increase, all of those things get in there. So, it's, it's about as accurate as we can make it, but there is just a lot of unknown. Um, I also added that we don't, have not settled with the teachers yet. Um, we don't know what our unexpected needs and opportunities, which ties probably right into the very next board, which is student enrollment. Um, who comes in? Um, if we get a high-need student, that raises your special education cost. One leaves, it lowers your special education cost. So, um, there's a lot of fluidity here with the budgeting and, um, and that's why I think we do about as conservative as you can do it, so. Any questions or thoughts?
On, on the food service budget for the consulting fees? Is that just a standard contract that we have with them or how do they come up with that?
Yes.
Okay.
That's in their contract. I don't want that to be approved for next year, but it's next month, but it's in their contract.
'Cause it went up by like 71 based off the fiscal 17 revised budget? Is that, was that due to us not knowing again? Remember when we talked about that that one time? We didn't know if we were gonna use them or not, so that's 630.
Last year's budget would have been based on us having our own food service?
Right, right. Those consulting services, they should all just be what we pay them.
Okay.
So that's why it's changed.
Are you looking at that original budget from last year compared to this year?
Yeah.
That would be it.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Anderson? All right, so do I have a motion to approve the fiscal year 18 budget? So, thank you, Mrs. Wees. Do I have a second?
No, Mrs. Wees.
Second. Thank you, Mrs. Talbert. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the fiscal year 18 budget? All those in favor of approving the fiscal year eighteen budget signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Eight point three, approved tennis court financing and resolution.
I just, we have in your packet, we've got the proposal from First Bank and Trust to finance our tennis courts. We were able to do that financing with them. One of the things in our proposal was, is that, you know, if they were going to do this with any other banks or anything, the school district would have to have, you know, a say and could basically say no. They have gone through and are working with the other three banks that are official school district banks, and so our four banks are, have access to it, and so that's where this proposal is at, and we have a resolution to accept the bank's proposal with one little hitch on the subleasing of the land with the city. And there's a couple options that we're going to need to work on over the next month is either the city, and I have the resolution, and I'll bring that to them, to just, that they accept that, I think it's about twelve feet of the tennis courts are on the city property. We have that ninety-nine-year lease with them, but the attorneys for the financing, Anna O'Kelly, if you want to explain, you know, the, gets into some technicalities. The other one is, is that if the banks agree to just not have it be, it's be an unsecured piece, which they're probably looking at too, so either way, whichever way we go, it'll be taken care of for, for next month. But we do want to accept the bank's proposals and that we're going to finance it this way. I don't know if you have anything to add, Kelly?
I think you covered it. Your legal counsel, as he was finalizing the lease, first thanks to First Bank and Trust, a very nice proposal to the district and to the local banks that are working with them, but his concern was that because it's on leased property, part of the tennis courts, that that's collateral essentially to the bank. So if, if for unforeseen reasons, the district did not make, make a payment and the tennis courts were transferred to the bank, they would really be useless because they're two pieces of property. So, that's why his suggestion was to cover that very minute chance that we'd get an agreement with the city, or the other option is to let the bank know that it would be an unsecured, and I think that's still in their court. If that's what they decide to, then it's taken care of. But just trying to cover all the potential, you know, circumstances that might arise in the future.
Thank you. So are we looking to approve two different things here? The tennis court financing with First Bank, and then also the resolution, or all in one?
The resolution is to accept that.
With the?
With the First Bank, so.
Okay, so just the resolution.
Basically, it's, what I've got up there basically is the lease purchase of the tennis courts for the financing of the proposal from First Bank and Trust, who is awarding or working with the other banks, which we are okay with. And then it just has this one piece right here, just says the acceptance of this offer will need to be upon receipt of the city consent as provided in section three, which has to do with that lease of that land that they have, so. And they gave me a resolution. I talked to Jeff Jones today. I'm on, I'll be on the city council agenda on July sixth, and we'll get this all done. And like I said, I talked with Kevin this morning at the bank, you know, they're checking into their obligations, and either way, it's going to work, and it's just, we just got to go through with this, so. And the issue is, is that on July twenty-fourth, we'll do our final approval, and then all the, we were set to do, I think, July twentieth, but because our next board meeting is July twenty-fourth, that's when that'll all happen, so we're still good to go on everything.
Any other questions on that for Mr. Enerston? All right, then, do I have a motion to approve the tennis court financing and resolution?
So.
Thank you, Mr. Oy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Botts. So with that, Mr. Oy gets to read, correct?
Really?
I believe so.
That whole thing, or just, what do you want?
Does he read the whole thing? You're supposed to.
That was quick.
You should let Jeff have it.
So you can have it, Jeff. You're going to have to roll it down, because I don't have it in front of me, do we?
It's on here, but.
What do they got to read, this whole?
They have to read the resolution, yes. Member Lance Oy introduced the resolution, moved its adoption, which was seconded by member, he's asked to read the resolution.
Member Lance Oy introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption, which motion was seconded by Jeff Botts, resolution relating to the lease purchase of tennis courts, providing for the financing thereof, accepting the proposal of First Bank and Trust, being resolved by the school board of the Independent School District, twenty-six eighty-nine, the Pipestone Area Schools of Minnesota, as follows. On May twenty-second, two thousand and seventeen, this board authorized the solicitation of proposals for a tax exempt lease purchase agreement to finance the acquisition of tennis court improvements on land currently leased by the district from the city of Pipestone, Minnesota. Section two, financing and award terms of lease, in connection with the lease purchase financing of the project, the district has received an offer from First Bank and Trust in Pipestone, Minnesota, to enter into a lease purchase agreement in the principal amount of seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars at an interest rate of three point one five, one five percent per annum. The offer from Lesser is hereby accepted, and the lease purchasing financing of the project is awarded to the Lesser. Provided, however, that the terms and conditions of the proposal and the summary of the terms for the lease is set forth in the request for proposals, heretofore approved, are hereby amended to, among other things, delay the closing of the lease. However, the acceptance of the other of Lesser on the terms set forth in the request for proposals, as hereby amended, is hereby made conditional upon receipt of city consent as approved in section three hereo. Section three, execution of documents conditional upon city consent, upon finalization of the lease and related documents, and upon receipt of the consent of the city to the sublease by the district of all or a portion of the city land to the Lesser. Which consent is deemed necessary on the terms of the lease between the city and the district dated August thirteenth, nineteen eighty-seven, relating to the city land, this board will adopt a resolution approving the execution of the lease and related documents. The superintendent and other officers or employees of the districts are hereby authorized to cooperate with the city to secure city approval to the lease purchase financing of the project.
For those in favor?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So do we need to keep reading the rest of that?
I believe the rest is from the city. I don't see. And is that meeting July third or July sixth?
July sixth.
Okay, because it says third on the document.
July sixth.
Your attorney will, he, now that he knows, he was not sure that would be the date before the coming, so.
So, eight point three, approved tennis court financing resolution passes, correct? Motion carries. There we go. Moving on to.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you much. Moving on to eight point four, approval of two thousand and seventeen, eighteen literacy plan. Hello, Mel.
Hello.
You just kicked Cory right out of there.
I might have to add another.
Do you need to turn your mic on? Is it on? It has a, okay, yep. Oh, bright green is on. Thank you. It's okay, I forget to. The literacy plan.
So, this is what Mel and I have worked on the last week or so, in putting together our literacy plan. We just made some changes concerning with our new curriculum that we are going to be using next year, and also just updated what we use for assessment, and also that we are getting four tutors for reading core and not just two, so that's really exciting. We are also doing this in realization that there are some things that we're not quite sure of with us both being new, and so we're hoping to tweak it as we go this year so that next year it will be very rock solid. So, this is bare minimum, bare bones, and next year it will be more fluffy, if you will.
It'll have more definite content.
Yes.
Of knowing exactly what assessments are provided and why we are giving them, and how they are being given, and when they're being given, and what that data is being used for, you know, so that we're not overtesting students, but yet we're getting the right information so that students have the opportunities to increase their literacy and be able to read on grade level by third grade. So, you know, having, having looked it over last year, I helped out with the transition with the co-op, and then this year, we tweaked how it looks, we didn't change a lot of content, we added the data for this school year, and then the, most of the data for the internal testing, the MCA data will be added once it's released to the public. Today was just a release for MVE release data, just for internal purposes, so that I can't share that information until it is later, I believe in August sixth, I think. I might be wrong on that date. So, looking through, we plan to be working with the elementary literacy team, which is part of the leadership team, that this will be a year-long project, so as I help them implement the usage of their new curriculum, so that it is a system-wide implementation, that it is done with fidelity, that they work together, and hopefully, there will be a page that will be bright and shiny on here that will say Pipestone Area Schools' Reading Philosophy. That is my ultimate goal to add to this, so that, that we have a concrete reading philosophy throughout our district, so that we know that in whatever classroom a student is in, that they have the same expectations and they have the same learning opportunities throughout. Did we forget anything? I don't think so. Okay. So that is what we have for the moment. Again, this is kind of baseline, so that next year it can be more accurate and really show what our literacy plan is accurately, rather than.
Well, and with the unpacking of the literacy standards this last year too, and our next step is to work on common assessments in that, and so it's really hard to put that in here when we're really not there yet. So, there's just things in the works that we need to work on this year, and then that we can really solidify this, so that it really, like she said, is bright and shiny and shows exactly what we're doing, so.
So any other questions for the two gals? For Mel and for Tony? All right, do I have a motion to approve the two thousand and seventeen, eighteen literacy plan? Thank you, Mrs. Pals. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman. Any other discussion on the literacy plan? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen literacy plan signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Eight point five, approved superintendent Kevin Enerston as the identified official with authority to authorize user access to MDE secure websites for Pipestone Area Schools. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Talbert. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Any discussion on that? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of eight point five signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Eight point six, acceptance of garbage and recycling proposal for two thousand and seventeen, eighteen. Mr. Enerston, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
We got two quotes for, two proposals for garbage and recycling for next year. The first was by Van Dyke Sanitation at a rate of six hundred and fifty dollars per month, and the other came from the city of Pipestone for, at a rate of six hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-five cents per month. The, you know, I think we've had with Van Dyke this year and probably for a few years, the city got really competitive, and I was looking at last year's, there was probably a hundred month, dollars a month difference between the two, but now we're down to twenty-two dollars and seventy-five cents between the two, so Van Dyke's is a little bit lower, but I think I mentioned, the city's been really good. We partner with them on a lot of different things. They help with the trees, they've, you know, share equipment and work back and forth, so I guess it's always, I guess the district is open to accept either one of these, and I think is fine in either way.
So anyone have any questions for Mr. Enerston on this? Any thoughts, any questions? Do I have a motion on one that you would like to accept? That's what we're asking, right?
Need to accept one.
One or the other.
Yep.
Do I have a motion from anyone?
I'm having a motion to accept the proposal from the city of Pipestone.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Oy. Thank you, Mrs. Pals. Any other discussion on that? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of accepting the city of Pipestone garbage and recycling proposal for two thousand and seventeen, eighteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries for Pipestone, for the city of Pipestone.
Yep, seven zero.
All right. Eight.
Point seven.
Eight point seven. Thank you. Woo! Approved membership to MREA for two thousand and seventeen, eighteen. Do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, MREA is the Minnesota Rural Education Association, and I just, you know, in my first year, this, this organization has been probably one of, next to MSBA, the primary support for, for us and provides us with a lot, awful lot of information. I've used them in the truth and taxation, those nice diagrams, that all comes from MREA. They get information out to me on legislative things and just really keep us up to date. So, I've been really impressed with MREA. I'm sorry, they should probably have me be a salesperson. They really advocate strongly for rural schools and making sure that what's going on at St. Paul and what's going on with a number of things in Washington, D.C., they advocate the right things for, for what we need out here, and so I know it's just a renewal, but I just wanted you to know, and I think I attached some information in your packet, worth every penny that we pay for MREA, so I recommend approval.
Any other questions for him on the MREA? Do I have a motion to approve the membership for MREA for the seventeen, eighteen school year?
So.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman. Thank you, Mr. Oy. Correct? Mr. Erdman?
Botts.
Oh, Botts, sorry. Erdman? Botts, sorry. I just heard two guys. Motion, Randy. Second.
Take one.
Jeff. You choose. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the membership for MREA in two seventeen, two thousand and seventeen, eighteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Eight eight, approved quote for New Suburban. Any comments on that?
Yep, we requested quotes for New Suburban, twenty seventeen, with a trade-in of our, Suburban number three, which is a two thousand and eight with, I believe, like a hundred and thirty-three thousand miles on it. We received quotes from Om Dolls here in Pipestone and also Jerry's Auto.
Quotes or proposals?
Propose, quotes, yeah.
Oh, okay.
And maybe I should just clarify, quotes, by law, if anything is under a hundred thousand dollars between twenty-five and a hundred thousand, you don't have to do seal bids, you can do quotes, or you can just enter right into negotiation with someone. You're not obligated. So we asked for quotes, which gives us some of that flexibility. Om Dolls' original quote came in about eight thousand above Jerry's Auto, and, you know, I informed both people, or both organizations of what we got, and that I, it would be coming to the board here this meet, tonight. Board here this meet, tonight. Last week, Omdal's called and I talked with their salesperson, and he said that, you know, they were, they really were wondering how that $8,000 difference, and said that they did some research and found out about some type of fleet purchasing through GM, and that they had pursued that, and that they could match the other organization's proposal, and so they actually came in $100 less than Jerry's Auto now. I've also talked with Jerry's Auto, you know, they didn't like that, they thought it was a sealed bid, they don't know, you know, and I explained what the laws are, I double-checked with our attorney and with MSBA, you know, this quote process is legit and this is how it works, and I just publicly, I didn't go out and tell Omdal's to figure this out. I mean, they wanted to see what they could do to get in on this, so that's where the new quote came in, and Omdal's is about, like I said, $100 under. It did come in about a week, a week ago, so it was a little bit different, but we're all within the legal parameters of the law in Minnesota for how this works, so I don't know if anybody has any thoughts or ideas on that, or...
Their second quote, though, I mean, it's still, there was a timeline when they were supposed to be in.
Right.
Their second quote was not within that timeline, right?
No. I wanna... Our quote advertisement was for June 5th, so their original was in at that time, the other one was in at that time, and then we received the updated quote here last week, so... I don't have the date. 21st?
I believe the date that the quote was due was the 19th, I believe.
Or is this the second one? Because we had to have an updated proposal, because I think the original talked about a three-quarter ton. Monday, June, Monday, June 5th. That's what you gave me. That would be the only thing.
Well, I, to me, that was the way we put it out there. They came in with a higher one at that point, I think we need to go with the lower one from that point. I'd like to keep it local, but their quote was what it was at that time.
Did we give Jerry's an option of re-Quoting it?
We informed them.
And they never came back with it?
No. No, they didn't.
So would that be a benefit to quote? That they could resubmit once they know some of the other quotes out there, or no?
Quotes is open to negotiation there. You know, we could negotiate, we could've said we wanna work here, we could simply just go and ask a local car dealer to, and negotiate into them for a vehicle, and not even put it out. We're within our legal limits to do that with this process, so... And with quotes, and the difference between a sealed bid and a quote, the quote you can negotiate. We did that with our transportation, which was above 100,000, but the state allows transportation and school district busing to be negotiated. That's why a $1.2 million contract is a quotation and not a sealed bid in that case. You can't do that with things like tennis courts, and that's all sealed bid, and to not take the sealed bid, you would have to have some justification and rationale as to why that would be worth it. Quotation, you can accept either one, you can have negotiations, you can, people can submit things, it's all legal. And the reason why they do that is so that school districts can get the lowest price on a...
Right, that's the purpose.
That's the whole purpose of trying to get that there, so...
And I guess as, I would like to keep it in town, if that's, if it's a lower bid and if it's, we're in our legal parameters, why wouldn't we?
I agree.
I mean...
Right.
You have to support local people if they're gonna support you.
I agree. I mean, it's kinda what I was gonna say. You beat me to it.
Great, let's think of it.
Yeah, great, yeah.
So did you find it, Deb? Was the 5th?
I was gonna say 5th, yeah, but I...
19th is in your head for some reason. Alright. Well, what we need to do is, I need a motion for one or the other, to accept Omdal or to accept Jerry's Auto. I need a motion from someone.
I make a motion to approve Omdal's bid.
I second.
Quote. Thank you.
Quote. Sorry.
No, that's okay. Thank you, Ms. Taubert. Thank you, Mrs. Wies. Any other discussion?
That's the, that's the one that we have here listed, which is the 33.
Any other discussion?
8.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the Omdal quote for the new Suburban, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Alright, number 8.9.
Our crisis management plan, this is the first reading, and just to let you know, we held approximately four meetings, maybe five, to go through this and update it, and I did, I did it with community members, with law enforcement and our school staff to review our crisis management plan and kinda bring it up to date. It was pretty good shape, but we did wanna bring it in line with our Alice training that we've been doing, and we continue to do, so we've got verbiage in there. One of the things that came out of this was the updating of our PA systems at Brown and Hill. That happened also, and we added a threat assessment at the back for the administrators to use in case of a threat that comes in, so otherwise, everything else in there was pretty good and I think usable. We also used, in response to student death, we've got some other resources with some letters and some announcements and some of those things that unfortunately we, you know, took care of again this year, too, so... But overall, I think our crisis plan is in good shape, but now it's been updated, and I feel really good, I appreciate our county emergency. Steve Ewing came in and was very, very helpful. Law enforcement, Officer Danks, our local medical people, and so they were all a part of it, our clergy were here, and school staff and counselors, so I just, I think it's good to know that our crisis plan is pretty solid and it's, I think this is up to date pretty current. Oh, and Cory?
Yeah, so the big piece is really cool, but then the other part is, how do you communicate it out to the staff and get them to use it? So, this was part of the whole planning piece, was to put it into a usable, quick piece, and this is a draft of what it will look like, you know, in the end, and it's got key components that you would find in, you know, throughout the crisis plan, and what you would do so that a teacher doesn't go searching, we can put these in a very usable location, it's good for subs, that kinda thing, and quick and easy access to crisis plan.
That would be posted, we'd like that to be posted conspicuously, so like Mr. Strasser said, a substitute. We don't have to train everybody and kinda got it, so...
Very nice.
Hey, good one.
Thank you. Brownie points.
Forgot about that.
Thank you, thank you.
I didn't do it.
8.10, approve Moberg, Taubert and Company, provide auditing services. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Taubert. Any discussion on that? Any discussion on approving Moberg, Taubert and Company? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye for 8.10.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 8.11, 8.12, we can do these together, I'm assuming. Approved donation of $400 from Pipestone Friends of Scouting and Youth Incorporated to Minders Library, and 8.12, to approve donation of $80 from Earl. American Legion Post 534 for banned on Memorial Day. Do I have a motion to accept those gifts?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Wies. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Pels. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the donation of $400 from Pipestone Friends of Scouting and Youth, and also approve the donation of $80 from the American Legion Post 534, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 8.3, commercial insurance renewal for 2017-18, this is an addition. Do you have anything?
Normally they come, Kozlowski's comes here and talks about this, they had something going on and couldn't make it, but I did meet with John and... Jerry? Jerry, met with them last week, and they took me through this. I guess basically the highlights are is that our insurance went down about, I think about $7,000, primarily due to a reduction, significant reduction in workman's comp claims. We just had way less with that this year, and so that's why there was such a reduction. They did make a couple of adjustments. One was in our property value, they had an assessment, and so our property valuation went up about $1 million, and also our annual payroll had, I don't know when they last updated it, but they updated that about $1 million, which has a bearing on workman's comp also. Otherwise, everything is in order on having our property covered and having our equipment and things covered, our liabilities for our employees and things that happen, they have crime coverage, they even have identity recovery and network data compromise coverage, you know, there are significant deductibles there with $10,000 and $2,500, so if any of that stuff happens. Our automobile coverage and excess liability and workman's comp. The only thing that they did want me, again, they do not have terrorism coverage in the policy, and if you're gonna have an act of terrorism, you have to have that specifically listed, and if there is anything, it's an additional $2,700. We did not take it last year, and they don't sell a lot of it around here, so that's why it wasn't in here, but when we make the motion, the motion needs to include that we wanna add terrorism, or that we are accepting this proposal without the terrorism coverage, so discussion.
Any questions? Any questions?
I would recommend that we get this without the terrorism coverage.
Alright, do I have a motion to accept the insurance renewal with or without the terrorism?
I'll make the motion to accept the coverage without the terrorism.
Thank you, Mr. Botts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Alright, all those in favor of accepting the commercial insurance renewal without the terrorism, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to adjourn? Thank you, everyone. Second, everyone. Who wants to? Did I say, yeah? Okay, God, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.